...to do that, especially hearing some of the things that have already been shared today. I can tell you, though, in my career as an RN, I've worked pre-hospital, I've worked emergency department, I've worked ICU, and nowhere that I can recall during that time have I found a piece of equipment that I could not use. However, I have had numerous patients with whom I could not communicate. Bryan is the biggest private employer in Lincoln. We have another very large employer in the city, the state of Nebraska, both of whom have great need for Spanish speakers. I want to challenge Lincoln Public Schools to put at least the same emphasis on a dual-language program that they do on technology. I now work in IT. I'm an analyst on the electronic health record. I have no formal education in computer science, yet I'm able to work in that capacity. But I cannot, or would not, be eligible for a job that requires a second language. I feel like we are doing our children a disservice by not providing this opportunity. So I hope that this can be seriously evaluated and something provided for at least future children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jackie Delgado. I am an LPS parent. My daughter is seven. She's bilingual. And I feel that this would be an important advantage program that would definitely benefit my daughter and other children in the school district. And I hope that it can be something that can definitely be taken a look into further and be appreciated for our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jocelyn Swanson. I just finished up my first year of graduate school at the University of Nebraska in Lincoln, studying Spanish, getting my masters. And I hope to offer a little bit of a different perspective, just in that I'm not actually from Lincoln. I moved here from Illinois about nine months ago. But I can tell you about my experiences with dual-language in high school and elementary school, which that is, I didn't have much. I only was offered the opportunity to take a semester of Spanish in eighth grade and then four years in high school. And I can say, now that I have a bachelor's degree in Spanish and I'm pursuing my masters, it is very important. I think it's, as we all have heard, very beneficial to learn a second language. And I'm not going to repeat everything that everyone said, obviously. But the one thing I would add is that I think if I had had the opportunity to be in a dual-language program like this, I think it would have been very beneficial. I think it would have stimulated my interest in foreign languages earlier and possibly more, as well as offered me more cultural awareness. My junior year of my undergrad, I studied abroad in Spain. And I kind of hate to say it, but I was kind of a cliche American. I realized how close-minded I was in that I was not aware of other cultures. I was not really taught to pay attention to other cultures or be even aware of what is happening in the world. And I believe that implementing a dual-language program in Lincoln like this would help students to have more of a global mindset. And I think it would really set the students of Lincoln apart. Thanks.
Thank you. There's Sandy Henzo. I think it's Thurston, but it could be Tom. I can't read the writing. So H-E-N?
A-O.
A-O? Okay. H- sorry. You have very pretty handwriting. I just can't read it.
Sorry. Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Jonathan Enao. Okay, right now, I'm teaching assistant at Lincoln University, University of Lincoln, it's better in that way. As you can notice, I'm not native of English, but I'm native in Spanish and I'm bilingual in French. So my perspective here is about an international student in the United States. As you can notice, as my parents have said, it's easy to get a scholarship if you are bilingual. It's better if you are trilingual. So in that order of ideas, if you have two languages, if you have your children as two languages, three languages, it's like transport them like a bridge, like a bridge builder, in order to keep relationships with another people, opportunities in work, and also it's another way to keep the roots and to have another culture. It's like we need, okay, we need to pay attention to grow up our children, okay, I don't have children, but our children, because I have students, that they are so interesting and have more opportunities in life, more opportunities in the world. So it's not like they need to plan a future, and they don't have the opportunity to have another point of view because they only have a language. And I think that it's important to have a dual-lingual program in Lincoln School because it's another opportunity to them. And that's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Pat Steer, Steen Steer, I'm hoping I'm right.
My name is Pat Steer. First, I want to thank you for your service. I know it's a great commitment and a lot of decisions to be made. I'm actually taking a different perspective. I had been an exchange student in high school to go to Argentina. When I went, I didn't speak a word of Spanish. So for a year, I had complete immersion. The first family I lived with did have a son who had been an exchange student to the US, so he helped me a little bit. And mostly, the family held up a fork and said "Denedor", or something like that. So I learned quickly, and I was immersed in school. I had no teacher, I had no grammar book, I had nothing but complete immersion, so I learned like a baby. When I came home, I was very fluent. And so I think if you want to learn a language, you can, number one. That opened my world, number two, and I'm kind of a linguist junkie now. I can speak 20 languages, five fluently. I've interpreted in all five of those, and love learning about other cultures. And I think languages became easier for me because my mother played a lot of music when I was growing up. And I was exposed to a lot of good music, and I was involved in good music. So there is the beginning. Please don't cut your music programs. I'm a former music teacher in Lincoln Public Schools, so I can say that. So, number two, I am concerned because at one point, I had a neighbor who was Hispanic, who had some hospital issues, and she spoke almost no English. So I went with her to interpret, and that made me realize, oh, I can do this. So I started interpreting as a profession at that point, and I worked for a lot of different organizations, including Health and Human Services, and working for the Urban In-N-Out Medical Center, and various places. Unfortunately, what I saw was shocking. I was rather naive, and I found from the inside out that there is a whole lot of manipulation going on, and all I'm hearing tonight is Spanish. We have 300 language groups in this city, minimum. That's minimum because just my friends from Sudan tell me there are 5,000 languages just in Sudan of native languages. So my concern is that all of my ancestors learned English, and they united through that language. All of the people in India, unfortunately, under oppression from England, but they all learned English, and so they're united through English. I don't understand why we're only talking about Spanish. And I think my heart falls through the floor when I think of my friends from Africa, from so many parts of the world that don't get any kind of special services in their language. And doubly so because we have more Hispanics here, but let's admit it, a lot of them have come without permission. And I think we're patting people on the back who have made bad choices. And that concerns me. And in fact, I did study more Spanish. After I started interpreting, I was offered an assistantship under Dr. Oscar Pereira at the university to do a master's degree in Spanish. About that time, I had seen so much manipulation going on that I thought, mm-mm, I don't want to continue this. And so I dropped it. I did not accept that. And in fact, I went on to study. I thought, I will study, get an endorsement in ELL. And so I took two different courses, which I also dropped because they were such manipulation courses. One of them said "English in the Science Classroom" on the text. You got inside the book, and it was all about promoting dual-language Spanish-English schools. And that's my greatest concern, that the Mexican government has had a great deal of success in moving into this country and using Spanish as a conquering tool. And that concerns me greatly. And I adore all of my friends from so many parts of the world, and I feel, if we want to have after-school programs, great.
Thirty seconds.
If we want, you know, encourage exchange student programs, great. The Vietnamese church teaches Vietnamese. Let the churches teach the language, you know, individual groups. But I'm thinking, we need to respect everyone and unite through one language, English. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Daniel Castillo. I am a social worker, Department of Health and Human Services, and I'm also a commissioner on the Latino-American Commission. And I'm just here to speak, like others have said, on the importance and the need for this program. As a social worker who deals strictly all day, every day with Latino clients, who obviously talk Spanish, I can tell you there's a need across the state for it, a huge, huge need. And, no, I think this will be something, this program is something that will benefit the state in the long run, as somebody else stated. Before me, the Latino population is going to get bigger, so there's going to be a bigger amount of citizens in the state that are going to need our services. And we have to have these workers here to help them, just to illustrate, I guess, the need for this, at least in the Department of Health and Human Services. I can tell you, there's probably, there's probably less than 20 workers for, at least in my Department of Medicaid and Long-Term Care, to handle all the applications in the state. And to narrow down even more, right now in the state of Nebraska, if you're a Latino who's disabled and put in a Spanish application, there's only one worker in the whole state who's doing those applications. That's this guy right here. And again, that just illustrates the need that we have, which is, I think, something that none of us here can deny. And, you know, it gives children, having a language, as you know, it's a resource for the children, going out into the workforce in the future. And having a second language helps them get a job, helps them stay in Nebraska, helps them grow the economy in Nebraska. And I know it helped me. I moved here from New Jersey three years ago, and within a month of being here, I had a job offer from Boystown Pathways and the state of Nebraska. Got job offers, all three of them, in one day. And I can solely attribute that to me being able to speak Spanish. So I just hope we can all agree that, that at the end of the day, it is a resource for the children, and they're what, they are what we're all here for. So let's see if we can get this program going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Jesus Jurado. I am employed by the Embassy of Spain. I'd just like to add something about what other people said, and I think it's a bit a different perspective. I just want to say that we are supporting dual-language programs in the United States and Canada. And here in Nebraska, we have, as you probably know, dual-language programs in Lexington and Omaha. What we do is, we run workshops for students, for teachers. We have presentations for parents. We organize sister schools in Spain. We have resources and scholarships for both teachers and students. And we have a visiting teacher program in coordination with Nebraska, Nebraska Department of Education. So we do all this. As I said, we have this Spanish Studies Institute at the University of Nebraska-Lincoln, and we all do this from here. And for us, it could be a pleasure to help Lincoln Public Schools implementing dual-language programs here. And also, a parent of a seven-year girl, she's enrolled at Lincoln Public Schools, we are, you know, highly impressed by the quality of your schools here, and it could be great for her to be part of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marcy Castillo. I am a teacher at North Star High School. I teach Spanish, and Spanish for Spanish speakers. About half of my students are Latino, so I come to you not as someone from a political standpoint, or someone who is working for a lot of bilingual students, although that's, you know, what I want for that to happen. But I am a concerned teacher. I am working on a small project to honor some seniors from our school who are graduating this year, and I asked for a list of the Hispanic seniors who are graduating. What they did was, they printed off a list of Hispanic seniors and highlighted the ones that weren't graduating. They were more highlighted than not highlighted. So you all have heard everything already, but I just want you to consider, while we say, yes, we have the Career Academy, we have technology and everything that we have to worry about, every year that we wait, we still have that many of our students, our students, not graduating. Now, dual-language programs can help the graduation rate for Latino students. If you go to school every day and starting in kindergarten, they tell you, no, you're doing it wrong. You're not speaking the right language, you're dumb because you don't understand English. No teacher says that, but that's the idea that the kids get. They lose their Spanish completely. They're not treated as gifted and talented. They're not treated with the respect that a white student would get, for example, if they were fluent in two languages at the age of six. They're told, don't speak Spanish, leave that at home, and focus on your English. And so they start with a deficiency already. It leads to low self-esteem, and that carries over. Just like the skills you learn in Spanish carry over to skills in English, the feelings you get from being told that you're not good enough carry over as well. So my students who feel like they're not good enough start feeling like they maybe shouldn't try. And then that's how we have the highlighted list with more students not graduating than graduating. And yes, I understand that it is hard. It's very hard to find people to do the, to do the job of teaching. It's hard to find the money. It's hard to find, politically, there's a lot of people who are opposed to it. I would argue that this is an effort to support our young students and not the Mexican government. But it all depends on who you want to focus on. But just keep in mind that each year we do wait is another year that that class of kids, those little preschoolers, kindergartners, are more likely to have half of them not graduate. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Teresa Catalano. I am an LPS parent, and I believe I'm the last speaker of the group tonight. But I'm also a faculty member at UNL in the Department of Teaching, Learning, and Teacher Education, where I train language teachers to work with English learners, but also foreign language. Tonight, I have a handout for you that has a lot of the information that has been said already, and I won't bother going through that again. But I'm going to focus instead on three important points. Why dual-language is needed in this district, why it's feasible in this district, and our proposal. I'll just kind of sum that up tonight. Dual-language is needed because the majority of the world's population is multilingual. Each year, new students come to LPS, bringing with them home languages other than English. Instead of building on these languages and additive education models, which would result in BIA or multilingualism for these students as English is acquired, these languages are eventually lost or underdeveloped, since no language maintenance and development programs exist for these students at the elementary level. As Marcy pointed out so eloquently, a student's language and identity is closely connected. Research has shown us that if there's a disconnect between students' home identity and what is promoted by the school, students are more likely to disconnect, disinvest, and experience educational failure. Furthermore, instead of capitalizing on the incredible array of languages available to LPS, these languages are lost. These potentially BIA or multilingual students become monolingual or monoliterate, and local students who have very limited access to foreign language at the elementary level remain largely monolingual, meaning that LPS is continuing to produce monolingual students who live in an increasingly multilingual, super-diverse world. Dual-language is feasible in LPS because, first of all, it would not mean a significant increase in cost to the district. According to Omaha Public Schools, who's been doing this for 16 years, and Fremont School, Public Schools, who just started a program, we can estimate startup costs of only $20,000 to begin a pilot pre-K and kindergarten program. With $15,000 per year, each year, a new grade is added until a full pre-K through 12th grade program exists. These funds could be procured from your district allocated funds for ELLs, as they'll serve first and foremost your English learners, along with other LPS students, as well as Title III funds. After this initial contribution, there are no other ongoing costs. Teachers do not need to be hired for the pilot program. There are existing bilingual teachers in the district that could just be placed into these programs and receive training, such as our dual-language endorsement we're beginning at the university, conferences, professional development opportunities in Omaha and Fremont. In addition, each year, as teachers leave the district, for whatever reason, incoming qualified bilingual teachers could be hired. The University of Nebraska-Lincoln is offering a dual-language endorsement in order to help prepare local teachers to work in these schools. And both Omaha Public Schools and Fremont have offered to share resources with us. Moreover, these programs actually end up costing less in the long run for various reasons. As several people have mentioned before tonight, Fremont has dual-language, Omaha has dual-language, Lexington has dual-language, Schuyler's developing dual-language. Lincoln Public Schools has long been a leader in the state educational arena. Why not make a stellar two-way dual-language program in which English learners and native English speakers reach high levels of BIA or multilingualism, one of the ways in which LPS leads the state, and another reason for parents to choose Lincoln Public Schools? So with this in mind, we'd like to ask the board, together with LPS officials, to develop a three-year plan to create a two-way Spanish-English program. And by the way, that's to begin. That's the most logical language, the language that we have the most numbers, but it doesn't mean that we oppose any other languages that would be developed after that. So we recommend Everett Elementary School as a potential site for this pilot. And just, we'd like you to keep in mind that dual-language programs are the only model for English learners in which the achievement gap is closed long-term. And so we ask you today, knowing what you know now, knowing the support you have behind me and in the community, please do the right thing for Lincoln students. Make equity a priority. Prepare multilingual students for a multilingual world by developing dual-language programs in Lincoln Public Schools. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would wish to address the board? I don't have any more blue cards. Seeing none, I would ask that, I have three committees that I made notes of that would need to look at something like this. One would be student learning. The second would be budget and finance, and the third would be planning. So if you guys could kind of just figure out what the logistics could be, I don't think it's something that you can put in just by looking at it and saying, okay, everybody, it looks good. I think you guys should research it, and that's where it should start. That's our process. Thank You have before you the consent agenda, items 8.1, 8.2, 8.3, human resource matters, routine business matters, option enrollment, student applications. Can I get a motion? Lanny?
Before making the motion, I'd like to pull item number two under routine business, and that's the resolution of intent regarding the Woods Tennis Center, number 8599.
All right.
And is there anything else that wants to be pulled? All right, in that case, I move approval of the consent agenda with the exception of the item I pulled.
Is there a second? Matt?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve, to Connie.
Out of an abundance of caution, I hereby declare a potential conflict of interest, and hereby abstain from voting on all payments to the Boys and Girls Club of Lincoln Lancaster County. As part of Agenda Item 8.2A, as set forth in the agenda materials for this meeting, I have signed and filed the recommended form, which reflects my intent and my vote on same. I vote in favor of the balance of consent items.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent items, noting Connie's conflict of interest, and the pulling of item, of bid number two.
This is the very last item.
Oh, thank you. I keep looking forward to find it. Seeing no other hands, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Mungard?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes. Moving on, we have first reading action at next meeting from Board Committee, newly annexed property to Lincoln. Lanny Boswell is the chair.
This item comes from the Planning Committee, where I serve with Barb and with Matt. The first annexation that we have for discussion tonight is Prairie Village North, which is 90 acres. It's near 84th and Adams. It's between the Walmart and Stevens Creek. We are recommending Pershing Elementary, Mickel Middle School, and Northeast High School for the assignments for that area. The second item that we have is Grand View Estates First Edition, which is 28 acres. It's near 70th and Rockabye Road, and we are recommending Maxi Pound Middle School and Southeast High School, also noting that those are 15, 16 assignments. And in the fall, we would switch that to Wyssong, and then eventually, it would be in Moore. So, as we've done with similar areas in South Lincoln near those schools.
Lanny, how many students do we have that currently live in those areas on the one where Moore and Wyssong would be open?
I don't have that information. I don't know if...
That would be an undeveloped area, so this would be part of development. So there would currently not be any houses in that area.
Right. So currently, none.
So more than likely, we wouldn't have kids switching when we open Moore and Wyssong?
Correct.
Okay.
Very unlikely.
Thank you.
And unless there's any comments or questions, this item would come back to us in two weeks.
I don't see any questions, so we'll move on. Items from the superintendent, tuition changes for 2016-17, and that would be Dr. Standish, Jill Polly, and Jenny Fundis.
Before you, you have a matter of routine business for the school district, where each year, we set tuition charges. This then plays into a billing arrangement that may occur with other school districts. In the past two years, we have had respectively five and seven students where there's been a tuition arrangement. It's been related to special education, and it's sometimes when a student is maybe placed in a residential setting here within the city of Lincoln, and then we're providing educational services, and there's a billing arrangement occurred with the school district. So this is a process of setting tuition, which is a state-regulated process that we undertake each year. We'd be happy to answer any questions that any of the board members may have about this
I don't see any questions. Thank you, Dr. Standish. Next item, the Community Health Endowment Grant for High School Transition Classrooms. Dr. Stavum, Dr. Hicks, and Russ
Just making sure you're here. This is a grant opportunity, one of two, that you see on tonight through the Community Health Endowment Grant. This is kind of a unique thing, really, that assists students with transitions. We have a number of students who will come from a variety of places as they come to one of our comprehensive high schools or other programs, and require some measure of support in that process. This is to allow funds for licensed therapists to be part of that transition process, and then part of a transition classroom at Lincoln High School. It requires no match, and it gives us another measure of helping students to come in and be successful.
Questions? The date is June 3rd, so we have time to bring this back for a second reading. Seeing no questions, move on to the Community Health Endowment Grant for Automated External Defibrillators in... Defibrillators in All Elementary Schools. Dr. Stavum?
Yes, and this one's pretty self-explanatory with the AED equipment. It's not universally available at the elementary level, so this would be to purchase those devices for 20 elementary schools. You'll see in the description that we have had an incident where there was a need for one of these devices. I know this is something that's become more and more common in schools across Nebraska, for sure, and I'm sure across our nation. It's the devices that allow kind of anyone to take them and use them quickly. They have a full guided process that kind of walks you through step by step very quickly, and is available for kind of that just-in-time need, rather than waiting for an ambulance to ride or other emergency care.
Don?
I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to this. If we don't know tonight, it's fine, at a future time, but could I get an update on where else we might not have AEDs in Lincolnite buildings?
I believe this completes all of them, but I don't know that for sure. We can double-check on it. Scott, do you know the answer to that?
I know there are all the high schools and middle schools, and maybe just a handful of them, and the great center support facilities.
We can sure check on that and let you know.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So I have a question for my colleagues, since these are grants that we generally are pretty good at saying, "Yeah, you want to give us money that works." Would you guys object to this going on the consent agenda at the next board meeting, these two grants?
I'd be okay with that.
Don?
I don't have a sense of any controversy with either of these.
Laura, would you make note that these two grants go on the consent agenda for the next meeting? Thank you. All right, moving on. Items for second reading, recommended for action. We have nothing from board committees, but we do have the Title VII Indian Education Grant. And that would be Dr. Stavum and Dr. Hicks.
And this is second reading, so I would leave that to the board if they want to make a motion.
Lanny?
Move approval of item 10.2.1, the Title VII Indian Education Program Grant.
Is there a second? Annie?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Title VII Indian Education Program Grant. The amount is $146,179. The grant application has a submission date of May 13th. Questions?
Barbara?
I'm very supportive of this grant. It's a grant that we do on an annual basis. I continue to ask for information regarding our graduation rate with the Native American population, a historical one, so that we can go and determine trends. I also continue to encourage student learning, and I've spoken with the chair, and she's been very receptive, and I appreciate that, on going and looking at Native American outcomes academically in our school district. I realize that this is, in the scheme of a large urban district, a small population, but it is our first peoples of our state and our country. And I am well aware, because I work with Native American families on a weekly basis through my church, of very many great needs. And I know the schools can't resolve all of them, but I think that we can go and become, address these issues of academic performance and on-time graduation in a more effective way. I've seen us do it with other ethnic groups, and I'd like to see us take those experiences that have been so fruitful and so successful and apply them to our Native American student population. So I continue to make that request, and I am confident, I had a wonderful conversation with Annie here, and I've had conversations with staff, that we will continue to work on this issue and have discussions and start to develop new strategies in this area.
Annie?
A follow-up on that, we had our student learning committee right before this meeting, and we went over the, this grant and information about this grant in pretty big detail. I'm not really ready to, since we walked out of that meeting at quarter of six to walk over here, I'm really like, we're at a point where we could really effectively share that, because it took up some time. But I'm pretty confident we can answer your questions. I think the most positive thing to say is that we have a team from this grant that has been doing some spectacular work. We did get some historical data on it, and it's an upward trend. We do have some work to do, I think, on how do we approach this in a cultural manner, as well as in an academic manner? And we had a nice little discussion, actually, about that and what that might mean. So I think we are definitely, this grant has done some amazing things. Just one short thing is that our, and the numbers, the way to look at the numbers, is a very interesting kind of long discussion in and of itself. But I think one of the most amazing things is these two, our Indian advocates, is that what they're called, are doing some great work in reaching out to the families and crossing, figuring out what it is. They told us they could tell us exactly the story for each student that didn't graduate, and also the stories of the students who have graduated. I think one of the biggest things I got from it was that in taking the ACT has been another step over the importance of taking the ACT, and the importance of being able to say why that would, and the importance of approaching it and how to utilize that for a strong future. So we will get back to, and I think we'll bring it, I would like to bring some of it back to the whole board. We need to do a little processing, so.
Thank you, Annie. Go ahead, Barb.
Well, I appreciate that, and I do know that we make progress, and I do know that our Native American advocates do a great job. But I am a mother of a Native American child, and I see a lot missing. And the services, as they are delivered now, are difficult to access. And I'm going to continue to share my story and the story that I hear from many people. And that is not to go and say that the work that's being done is not good, because it is. The two women who work in Indian education do a huge amount of work, and they impact many, many people. And I would never diminish that or disrespect that. My challenge is for us here to educate ourselves more thoroughly as to the true story that we have, and I will talk about my experience. And my experience, frankly, has been mixed.
Lanny?
Annie covered the comments I was going to make.
Thank you. Any other comments? Annie?
I think it would be five minutes to have that into the conversation, and I think that we also need to look at who else to bring into that conversation.
I would really welcome that. I think that the more voices we have, the better, because it's not, and I don't want to go and communicate in the wrong way. When we go and we have what I call constructive criticism, I think our first reaction sometimes is, "Ooh, that hurt."
We're Nebraskanized.
Yes, exactly. And that is not my purpose, is to be hurtful. It's, my purpose is to go and open up the dialogue and talk about what works and what is not.
And I think this plays in the conversation for all that.
Thank you.
Laura, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Mungard?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes. Moving on, we have no expedited and emergency actions. We do have one item removed from the consent agenda, and that was the resolution of intent for the Woods Tennis, Woods Tennis Center. And Lanny, you pulled that, so I will turn it over to you.
Actually, before I make a motion to approve that, I did have a question on second reading. At our previous meeting for first reading, we had the transportation plan, and I know there are a number of parents out there that are interested in that plan, and I saw that we did not have that for second reading. Just for the benefit of the public, Kathy, could we explain, or maybe Dr. Standish could explain that that will be coming forward?
Correct. We do plan to bring second reading transportation plan, May 24th. We did ask for a little bit more time on two matters. One would be the focus program transportation and the number of runs that we dedicated to that program. We were doing some feedback with high schools on matching up to bell times and start times, and so Bill McCoy and his team are adding some additional resources to that plan and looking to see what the best thing will be to bring forward, May 24th. So we're doing a second look, and we're going to bring it forward. We are also, we're, had the benefit of receiving feedback from our contractor, because we do have contracting as a component of our transportation plan, due to really the human resource need of retaining bus drivers that we continue to have. And so if we waited till May 24th, we would also have results related to what we'll be looking at for contracting for next year. So we thought keeping both of those conversations together, having the contract with the contractor on the agenda, along with the plan, made good sense, and then we're also making some improvements on our plans related to focus program transportation.
Okay, so just to be very clear, the plan that will come to us on the 24th will include transportation for the focus programs?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, now we're going on to the item removed from the consent agenda.
All right. And I would move approval of item number two under routine business, the resolution of intent regarding the Woods Tennis Center.
Don?
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the item removed from the consent agenda, the resolution of intent regarding Woods Tennis Center. Lanny, since you removed it, I'll turn it to you first.
And yesterday, I asked staff some questions regarding that, and so I've just asked Dr. Standish to share those answers with the rest of the board and the community.
Sure. So a little bit of background here, we do use the Woods Tennis Center. This is a discounted prepaid-for-use plan, as they work on a project. We definitely want to continue to have use at the Woods Tennis Center. It's a valuable resource to our tennis program for both boys and girls tennis, which takes two-thirds of the school year, two out of three seasons. We are looking at paying this. I do want to say it's out of the Facility Use Fund. The agenda item does say depreciation fund. I want to make sure we make that clear. And this would be looking at, there will be contract negotiations with the Woods Tennis Center, their organization, and the city. Based on the terms that are agreed on there, we anticipate and have estimated the value of our use at a discounted rate at $10,000 per year. So this would basically just be saying, we do intend to make a contribution to the Woods Tennis Center improvements. We do intend to be a partner in that project, but it is that prepaid discounted rate that we're looking at paying. And we'd be communicating that, however, this would be the intent to do that, and then once all the contracts are worked out and approved, then we would be able to make the payment. A couple of questions were, what do we use Woods Tennis for? It's really access to additional courts. And so for a school that's running a tennis program with varying levels, with a number of participants, looking at the three courts per high school, then you're looking at potentially six players playing at any given one time, doubles, you double that. And so this is really increasing access to courts. We are currently using Woods Tennis every day, Monday through Friday, and on most Saturdays throughout both seasons. We're using it for practices, for schools to reserve spots for practice, to increase access to courts. We're also using it for duels. The six tennis format, so having access to six courts at one time is very advantageous when you have duels, nine courts when you have tournaments. So the actual magnitude of courts available on one side is also advantageous to our tennis program. So the primary is for practices and for competitions. This is a longstanding history we've had in partnership with Woods, and having agreements where we do access the courts. We have always paid Woods Tennis for that tournament time. We've also had individual schools that have paid Woods even for some indoor court time during inclement weather. The school booking of the courts would continue. Under this plan, we would be prepaying for both tournaments and practice use that we're currently using. Then, in addition, we do think the Woods courts are in good condition. The LPS courts are also in good condition, so we think, we think we have good standing there. And I think really just focusing on the idea that we've estimated our use, we've assigned what we think is a discounted value to that use, and that's how we came to the $10,000 per year. So that's a summary of some of the questions that Mr. Boswell posed, and some of the conversations that we've had, and this really is just an intent resolution, so we can publicly state what we intend to do, knowing that there's still work ahead for both, for the Woods organization to get this project going.
Lanny?
Thank you, Dr. Standish. I appreciate all the work that you and that Scott have done to get this information together. I'm strongly in favor of this resolution. I think the six courts gives a certain advantage to that facility over anything that we have at our high schools. It's an important sport for our students, and by stating our intent, we help our partners improve the quality of the facility and ensure that it's going to be available for students for years to come. So I intend to vote in favor of this item.
Barbara?
I just want to make a few comments. It's my understanding that Woods Park Tennis Center has been very active in going and doing outreach in our community and to the CLCs and to different minority centers, and they have a wonderful training program where they introduce students to the sport of tennis. And what's really nice about tennis is, once you have a racket and a ball, you can pretty much play it anywhere in the city, and it's pretty much free, and it's very good aerobic exercise and things of that nature. Saying that, of course, I'm very, very supportive. I don't think I have quite the right language in front of me, but it occurs to me that since in my day job, I have worked on this particular project in another capacity that I need to refrain from voting on this.
Does she need to put on anything?
Just abstain when that...
Yes, okay. Dr. Standish, my understanding is there has been significant resources, like millions of dollars being raised privately, and this is just our contribution, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I want people to understand that. Okay, seeing no other questions. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Mungard?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Abstain.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Motion carries, moving on. We have informational, oh, don't look at that. Informational items. I'm making sure I'm not repeating myself here, from board committees.
We've been busy, all of us. We should just say that.
It's been a long day.
We didn't present a term of right.
From the Career Academy. Lanny?
The Career Academy Joint Board will meet tomorrow morning at 8:15 at the Career Academy.
From the superintendent, your update, Dr. Joel.
Not a lot. Wild weather day yesterday, and I just want to say thanks to our staff for making appropriate decision with very little notice. I think we came through it okay. And then, this is that time of year where we're just celebrating a lot of retirements and a lot of student successes, and, you know, it's just a fun time of the year, and two weeks till graduation, and this year will be in the books.
Announcements for upcoming events include the Career Academy Joint Board meeting, as Lanny said, at 8:30 tomorrow morning, Face the Chamber at the Country Club at noon tomorrow, LEA Accolades, Firefighter Hall, 5:30 p.m., which is a retirement celebration for all our wonderful teachers, LEA member teachers. On May 13, the LPS Asian American Student Recognition, Lincoln Community Foundation. May 16 is the board reorganization meeting, and I would remind you that we have a closed session at 5:30 that night. It's not on here, but you all do have that, hopefully, on your calendar. It is a closed session. May 17 is the Voice Student Recognition at Bryan Medical Plaza. May 19, Every Child in the City Will Be Screaming Hurrah is the last day of school, and it's also the Bryan Community Graduation at Southwest High School. And Sunday, May 22, we have six graduations. Guys want me to read the times? Just to remind people, East High is at noon, at Pinnacle, let's just do it by venues, at Pinnacle Bank Arena at noon, East High School. At 3 o'clock, Southeast High School. At 6 o'clock is Northeast High School. At Devaney Sports Center is North Star at 1:30, Lincoln High at 4:30, and Southwest at 4:30. at 7:30. So hopefully you get to the right place when your child is graduating. On May 24 is the LPS Leadership, LPS Leadership Reception at, here at LPSDO, and our board meeting at 6:00 PM. Since we have no need for closed session in mind, Dr. Joel?
No.
Kathy?
Sorry, Annie?
I'm not going to ask for a closed board. I wanted to do a shout-out for Scott Middle School. I went to their Make a Difference Fair, which was last Thursday, and I don't know if anybody else has ever been there, but it was really highly impressive. It was like Think Science Fair, but you have all these young adults telling you about all the issues in the world versus volcanoes. And so they have their boards up, and they were, they greeted me, they had no idea who I was, I'm just walking around without any children and so forth, and they greeted me, shook my hands, looked me in the eye, and told me about all their different issues. And they, later, she told me that they raised over $10,300 that will be divided to 70 different charities. And I just think that's just phenomenal for, there's the sixth graders at Scott Middle School, I mean, the whole gym was full. But I have three favorite quotes. Actually, I can only think of two of them, but one of them was this young man, and I asked each of them, I says, "Well, what did you really learn?" After they did their spiel, "What did you really learn from this program?" And the one young man told me, I thought this was great, he goes, "I learned that you don't just have to raise money to help, there's a lot of ways to help people." And I thought, "Well, that is a big lesson for us all to learn." And then the other young woman was raising money for charity of my heart, feminist.org, and I says, "Well, what did you learn?" And she's like, "Did you know that women make less than men? That is just not right." And I'm like, "Rock on, you're correct." So I just think the variety of what they had there was just phenomenal, too, so that these kids are so aware of the world in a different way, and I just wanted to give them a big old shout-out.
Thank you, Annie. And before you all leave, Laura would like you to fill out your little green slips and make sure she gets them back. And with that, adjourn this meeting.